Good afternoon. Welcome to It's in the Ballot for the Pokékanal Lampdun Ward. I am Nick Hollander, your host. We have with us today three very dedicated candidates. And we will start off with our opening credits. All right, welcome back. We're going to start off with candidates' opening statements. And we will start with Teal.
My name is Teal Maou. I'm a business owner. I own a hairdresser salon in Wellington City. I live in Central City and we've been doing this for nearly 30 years now. I'm standing for the Lampdun Ward because I strongly believe that our city has come to the crossroad. Change needs to be made and things that need to be altered on the right path. And I believe that this time around, it's not just the mayor or the councillor. I think it's everyone on board with us all hand on deck because the time is now and we need the drastic change.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, Dan.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dan Millward. I'm a dad, I'm a husband, and I'm a proud business owner. I've been running technology companies in Wellington for over 20 years. My software has supported millions of students around the world, improved their learning outcomes in computer science. I licensed our technology to the University of Chicago last year, which has freed me up to do this. Wellington's always been my coolest little capital, but something's changed. The city doesn't feel as safe anymore. Access into the city's been turned upside down and our pensioners are afraid they'll be forced to sell the family home. These are all issues I think are worth fighting for. I've had over two decades in the startup space, so I know how to make great products out of tiny budgets. If I'm elected, you can be confident. I'll treat every dollar in the budget like it really matters. Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Tony?
Kia ora. My name is Tony Di Lorenzo and I'm proud to represent the best ward in the city, the Lampdun Ward. I live in the Lampdun Ward in Mount Cook, just up the road from the studios here. And I have a small business with my wife Deborah in interior design. So I love Wellington. I've lived in a few places around the world. And I can truly say I felt at home when I came to Wellington, but it has lost its way. It's getting harder to do things. The council is not necessarily putting funds or tracking things in the right direction. And they're not making differences that really help the people who drive the city. Why should you vote for me? Because I'm a good guy. I've got a lot of passion. I've got a lot of experience in not-for-profits as well as in business. So I know how to get things done on a limited budget. But I also believe through my conversations with people, there is a huge amount of goodwill out there in Wellington. And what we need to do is to tap into that so that we can create a city that we want for us, from us. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, candidates. Now, we're going to get on to our box questions. I'll explain how this works for the viewers at home and in the audience. Each candidate takes a turn choosing a box between 1 and 28. They then have one minute to answer the question inside. Each candidate has two button cards and one defer card. Virtual, you know, I keep track of those. The button, if a candidate would like to answer a question another candidate has chosen, they hold up their button card. And after the candidate has finished speaking, they will then get one minute as well. If they get a question they don't want to answer, they can use their defer card to choose another candidate to answer that question. All right. So that's how it works. We're going to start off with Dan. What box would you like? 1 to 28? 25. All right. So, and I will read out the letter which corresponds to the question. Question. L for Lima. What is your plan to repair Wellington's failing pipes and drains?
All right. So this council completed 638 metres of pipes and 12 kilometres of cycle lanes. I'd like to be the councillor that completes 638 metres of cycle lanes over the next trannium and does 12 kilometres of pipes. You have to understand that the incumbents really didn't do a whole lot of pipe work. But credit, we're credit due. They dug their heels in and they paid $500 million for a $200 million sludge plant.
Thank you very much. Up next is Tony.
I'll have an O for awesome.
An O for awesome. We don't go that low. Let's choose another number.
Okay, I'll take seven.
That we can do. Lucky number seven. We have Q for Quail. Quebec. All right. So, should Wellington start curbside food waste collection?
Thank you very much. The short answer is yes. The short answer, the longer answer is not now. We have far bigger problems at this stage on the financial side. We need to make, we need to get the box looking a lot better. Again, I don't want to harp on about not-for-profits, but whenever I've come in to try and help and save a failing not-for-profit or a small organisation, the first thing I say to them is that all your energy is going into managing the money. And you've taken your eye off the ball. You're not focusing on what you've actually set yourself up to do and deliver. So we need to get our finances working better so that we can concentrate on some good things like this. And I'm not saying it's a bad thing. It's just the wrong time now. And what happens when you force things through before you've got the right money or the right infrastructure behind doing something, you do it badly. And then all the money put into it is a waste. So let's delay it till we can do it properly.
Thank you, Tony. Teal, your turn.
Number nine.
Number nine. N for Niger. Or Nelly. Okay. What was that? Thank you. Thank you. I knew it was somewhere. Yeah, just hiding in there. All right. Greater Wellington Regional Council is considering bendy buses on the number two route. Would you support Wellington City Council traffic resolutions, for example, lengthening bus stops to make them work efficiently?
Well, my answer is yes, I do. But the change must not harm to the local businesses.
All right. Round two. And we will start with Tony.
Could I have number 14?
Certainly can. C for Charlie. Excellent. I appreciate being corrected if I get it wrong. I really do. All right. What values do you bring as a councillor that set you apart?
I'd like to believe that I do engage with the community. I have lots of friends on all sides of political spectrum. I form alliances and I form partnerships with people to get things done. And I think that's a big skill that we're sort of lacking at the council at the moment. There's a lot of division. And debate is great. But once a decision is made, even if you're against it, if you're on the council, you need to back it and go forward. Otherwise, you're chopping and changing. So where I think, you know, something I can do is build relationships with these fine gentlemen here, who will be joining me on council, hopefully in October. But also across the other wards as well.
God, we have a good audience today as well. That's what I like to see. All right. Teal?
Number three.
A B for Alpha Bravo. Do you think Wellington City Council should proceed with a 116 million golden mile project as approved or revisit it with businesses?
I think you need to visit with the businesses. You need the consultation. I think it's important that you engage with the community, especially businesses, especially in our Lampdun Ward. We have seen a lot of businesses struggling around. And as a city, we can't evolve, you know, we can't change. And if we're going to change, it needs to be organically.
Thank you. All right. And we have a button from Tony.
I'd like to agree with my learned colleague here. As I said before, there's a lot of goodwill in the city. And there are a lot of business owners who are willing to put money and invest in the city and in things around the golden mile. But they feel that they've been shut out and they're not listened to and they're not getting what they want. So I think there's a huge potential to work with the businesses to get something again that's going to be fantastic for the city and help businesses who are really, really struggling.
Thank you, Tony. Dan, your turn.
There's a...
To choose a, unless you were butting in. Were you butting in?
Yeah.
Oh, you're butting in too. Okay. Hey, that is fine. That's what they're there for.
Yeah, I think it's such an important project that affects every Wellingtonian. And I think we should pause. We should do proper public consultation. And that consultation process should include the people who live in the city, the pedestrians, the cyclists, and the hospo owners. And it should be, and the council offices, they should be there too. But they should be there to listen and basically do what they're told by the people of Wellington. And it's a, it's a process called deliberative democracy, which I've been looking into. And I think that's how Wellington should approach every major project that affects every Wellingtonian. Thanks.
I liked what Dan was saying as well, you know. I think, I think the city, especially our councillor, when we talk about consultation, I think is, it's almost like the word that they use is the punchline at the party. And I don't think that's right. I think when they mean consultation, meant be a full consultation, you know, and the public need to have a voice. Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Dan, your turn to choose a box.
One.
Nice and easy for me. Thank you. E for Echo. How will you rebuild grassroots trust beyond social media engagement?
So I think I'd do that via regular constituent meetings. I commit to make myself available at least once a month in the Lampdun Ward for constituents to come and meet me. And I want to be the councillor that you can call and to be there. I would say, hi, how can I help? And if you're going to be voting somebody, this is a sort of an important question, I believe you should be asking them. Because how can a councillor represent your voice if they don't know you or your ideas? Thank you.
Well said. All right. Next round. Teal? Y for Yankee. Y for Yankee. How will you encourage housing supply and affordability in both the central city and suburbs?
Straightforward. You need to cut all the red tapes, speed up the consents, and incentivise the developer.
Can't do you 25. Can do you, yeah, yeah, I can do you. 24, I can do you. 24. Good day of August. Good, yeah. It's my birthday. V, well, V for Vendetta. I'm going a bit off script here. Or victory. I do prefer victory, actually. Yeah. Yeah. All right. I know, I know. Victory is even better, though. Should ratepayer money be used to undo already completed cycle waits?
So I think that depends. People are leaving Wellington because they can't afford to live here. A single car park generates the city around $11,000 a year. If the cost to remove some of the plastic poles is less than $11,000 per year, I'd say probably we'd be making a financial return for Wellingtonians in the second year. If we make Wellington more affordable, people will stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Tony?
Number nine.
Or 10.
We'll go with that, eh? H for hotel. All right. How will you keep services within budget without more rate hikes?
A difficult question because at the end of the day, for services, we do need to pay for stuff and money isn't free. But what I think is a good policy to do with is to ring fence a lot of the maintenance funds. In the past and in the last few years, a lot of maintenance funding has been diverted to new capital projects. This has led to kicking the can down the road and the maintenance costs blowing out massively. So, look, when you're, when you own a house, you know that delaying fixing a roof means you're going to replace your ceilings as well as your roof. So we need to stick to the maintenance budgets first of all. That should hopefully keep the services running longer, make them more efficient, and that will keep the services running.
I can appreciate that. I've just had to start learning how to maintain my house.
If you need an interior designer, I know someone pretty good.
I might take you up on that. Button?
Yeah, I'd like to add in with what Tony was saying. I think it's important we cut all the vanity projects, tighten the management, especially within the WCC, and focus on the central things that's important to us as the ratepayer.
Thank you. All right. New round. And Tony, you get to go first.
Lucky 13.
Lucky 13. Okay. Yes, that's, we'll go with that. Or Pokékanal. How about that? Yeah. Hey, it keeps it fun. Keeps it fun. All right. Do you support safer school speed limits citywide?
Controversially, yes. I used to work managing Hut City Kindergartens. And the damage we saw that happens to children from speeding cars is horrific and devastating for families in the community. People know where schools are. They know they should be driving slower. But the speed limits and anything to slow it down around them is a good thing. And yes, I do support that.
Thank you. All right. Teal?
I think I'll go for 12.
Yep. Not a problem. All right. What will be your top priority if elected?
If I get elected, the first thing I would do is basically fixing the basics. Pipes, rows, and also looking at spending discipline. We're talking about fiscal restraint. We're talking about balance of the book, all those little basic fundamental in business. And I think that needs to be done now, you know, in October. Because you can't operate a business that way. You know, and at the same time, we're often talking about, as a business owner like Dan and Tony will understand, running on credit card is no way. You're not going to get anywhere with that. And you're ending up deeper and deeper. And our city can't afford it.
Thank you, Teal. Dan?
Have we done 14?
We have. I'll give you 15.
Lucky number 15.
I like you. All right. Just makes my life easy. B for Bravo. Should party politics in council come before Wellington and its ratepayers? Why or why not?
No. Party politics, from my perspective, create division. And Wellington has never felt so divided. This has been evidenced time and time again throughout this trannium. I don't believe people around the council table should have split loyalties. It's that simple.
I'd like to add to that as well.
Oh, all right. How do the two other candidates feel about giving an extra button?
Yep.
Yep.
I agree with Dan totally. The answer is no. And very simple, ratepayer must always and always come first.
Well said. Well said. All right. And starting a new round. Dan, you get to go first. S for Sierra. For Sam. Okay. Do you support free fares on public transport for under 25s students and low-income groups?
I think my answer has to be maybe, but probably leaning more towards the no. Has everybody here heard the expression, there's no such thing as a free lunch?
Yep.
I don't support this because I don't believe that the fares are free. I think that the ratepayer will be subsidising these fares. And I don't think we have that extra money in the bank to be doing such a virtue signalling pursuit at the moment. If it doesn't cost the ratepayer anything, I'm a yes.
And it is Teal's turn. No, no, sorry.
I don't even know what number. It's 28?
Yeah, we'll give you that. Well, there is actually 28. So it's not a matter of giving you that. M for Mancy.
Sorry, N is it?
That was, sorry. I was being facetious. M for Mike. Or Moon. Do you support traffic resolutions for introducing bendy buses?
The answer is yes. If they improve the reliability and the efficiency.
Thank you. Just getting a sense of déjà vu for some reason. But anyway. Okay, yeah. Blame the AI for that one. Yeah. All right. Tony?
Number four.
Number four.
I don't support this because I don't believe that the fares are free. I think that the ratepayer will be subsidizing these fares, and I don't think we have that extra money in the bank to be doing such a virtue signaling pursuit at the moment. If it doesn't cost the ratepayer anything, I mean, yes.
And it is Teal's turn. No, no, sorry.
I don't even know what number, it's twenty-eight?
Yeah, we'll give you that. Well, there is actually twenty-eight, so. It's not a matter of giving you that. M for Mancy.
Sorry, N is it?
That, that was, sorry, I was being facetious. M for Mike. Or Moon. Do you support traffic resolutions for introducing bender buses?
The answer is yes, if they improve the reliability and the efficiency.
Thank you. Just getting sent to deja vu for some reason, but anyway. Okay, yeah. Blame the AI for that one, yeah, all right. Tony?
Number four.
Number four.
Rose terrified, they had a choice of pick forty-five questions, pick twenty-eight in, uh, pick twenty-eight in each list. Just to put some context up there, so it chose which ones to put on for the three different shows that were painful today.
All right. AA for anhydrous ammonia. I, I was trying to steer. Should, should, ah, sorry, should Airbnb-style dual-key homes be rated as commercial?
Bit of a hot topic with the accommodation crisis in Wellington. So I think no, but again, the long answer is for landlords who rent out properties that could be standalone accommodation for members of the public. These are fully contained houses and flats. They should be, if they're going to rent them out on Airbnb, there should be additional charges on that or blocked. A lot of countries do this around the world, and it's led to an increase in the housing supply for residents. For Airbnb, who rent out a room in their home, I'm all for it, and there should be no charges on that because it gives a chance for people to see how wonderful Wellingtonians are at hosting and a chance to show off our city.
Because Wellingtonians are wonderful.
Yes.
I can, I, I'm speaking from experience here, all right. Teal, you get to start the next round.
Seven?
I'll give you eight. Yeah, yeah, sorry. Unfortunately, we can't always get what we want. X for X-ray. What is your plan to move rough sleepers into suitable housing?
I think it's a very, very complex issue, and I think we need to work closely with NGO, non-organization, government organization, and support housing option while recognizing that not all rough sleeper want or can immediately take up housing. So the issues are deepened in our society, and it's, it's not just Wellington here, it's our whole central government as well, as well as overseas. So a little bit of care maybe, and empathy will go a long way.
Tony, you have a button?
It's a hot topic, one which potentially could lose votes, but I do want to add, I agree a lot with Teal, but also we need to turn the tap off. The homeless of tomorrow are in the system today, and we need, do need to do more to stop them getting into a position. Now, there's not much we can do at council, but there is a big building up the road called the Beehive, and we're in one of the best positions in the country to knock on their door, talk to them, and start getting them to put policies or look at this seriously, because if the council is just picking up the pieces of homeless and central government or even what we can do at city council isn't turning off the tap, then we are admitting we will have this problem forever.
Triage is ongoing. All right, Dan?
What have we got left?
What do you want?
Why?
Okay. Twenty-seven it is.
Are you sure?
I am, I am, I am sure.
All right.
U for unicorn. All right, do you support removing or retaining existing cycleways? I, that's what I thought. It's, it is, so what I'm going to, I'm going to make an executive decision here, shall I? And we'll go for a, you know, a bit of a, a different, different question, all right. J for Juliet. How, I, how will, how will you fix accountability around Wellington City Council's history of project cost blowouts?
Well, I think one budget blowout seems forgivable. Two budget blowouts, and I wouldn't blame you for being a little bit worried as a constituent. Three budget blowouts, and you should be concerned. In my mind, there's only two reasons why you'd have three budget blowouts. Extreme incompetence or corruption. And wouldn't you like to know which, as a constituent ratepayer in Wellington, we need to know that the next generation of council isn't going to put future generations further into debt? I think this, the answer, my answer really comes, revolves around a, I want there to be transparency around this stuff, and I want to know what's going on. I'm really concerned that last week, there were councillors that, that voted not to review why there were budget blowouts.
Thank you very much, okay. Teal?
Nine?
We can give you sixteen.
Okay, that's close enough.
Unfortunately, it is.
That's the nine, I've got sixteen.
Yeah, yeah. In a lot of, you know, cases, that, that'd be great, yeah, yeah.
Sounds like my wife, the stuff she gave.
All right. Uh, now I'm drawing, drawing blanks, I was gonna say W for Wales. Whiskey, but yeah. As I said, I'm drawing blanks, so. Let's do Wellington, I like Wellington, all right. Are cycleways a core service of Wellington City Council or a nice-to-have?
The answers are very simple, they are nice-to-have, and they're not a core services like pipes and rows.
Thank you. Tony?
Nineteen.
G for golf, not with Trump, no. He won't come over here and play. What level of rate increase, if any, is acceptable over the next three years?
Yeah, that's a very, very, very hard one. That's, you know, as we've said before, there are a lot of services, there are a lot of things that we have to deliver, and the costs are going up, so how much are we prepared to pay for the services? It's all very well saying zero rate increases, but that if, if that means that our water supply is not safe to drink, well, surely that's not acceptable. I would like to see it very, very close to inflation, but how we get there could be quite, could be quite difficult. But what we've all been saying, and in fact, everyone who's running is saying, we need to get control of the spending, and it's once, once we do that, we'll have a better idea. But we do need to be mindful that there are consequences if we do cut through. As I say, I'm, I'm committed to keeping rates as low as we can, but I'm not committed to sacrificing that for the sake of safety of the citizens of Wellington.
All right, what do we say, for Teal having another one?
Thank you. We should be like in Australia, we should cap the rate at the inflation. Anything above that, it's a standard order that we have set mandate and get public approval. Very straight with black and white, nothing more, nothing less.
All right. Dan?
What have we got left?
All right. Four, five, seventeen.
Seventeen.
R for Romeo. Should recycling bins be taken away from households that consistently misuse them?
Well, my first answer was like, yes, but then I thought that might have unintended consequences, so I don't really know, sorry, sorry, people of Wellington.
At least there's honesty, yep, yes, yes.
I'll throw in one of my interesting policies, there's one called abuser pays, and, and people who break, break laws or bylaws and things, there should be some consequence. I think a lot of the graffiti and posters and things that are all over the streets, there's no consequences for doing it, so people keep doing it, so there needs to be some, some form of consequence.
Fair enough. All right. Tony?
Eighteen?
Yes.
You heard it here first.
I for Indigo. Which non-essential projects would you stop to cut costs?
There is a list going around, but there is a golden mile, definitely a pause. The recycling, the organic recycling can be paused. A big one that isn't thrown about is, there's several, it's a couple of hundred million dollars put aside for earthquake strengthening over the next couple of years, at the same time that central government is rewriting the standards. So I think there could be a pause on that to find out what the new standards are, because that could save quite a lot of money if the, the standards or the criteria drop, stops us doing a whole lot of work that we, we don't need to do.
Thank you, Tony. Teal?
Twenty-one? Twenty-two?
Actually, twenty-one, is there?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's the weather, it sounds wonderful. D for Delta. Should Wellington elect all councillors citywide instead of by ward?
The answer is no, wards keep councillor account for the local community, so the answer's no.
Dan, you're up.
Four?
Yep. I think this is also a good sort of Alzheimer's, you know, test, pre, yep, yep. O for ostrich. Orchestra, or orchestrate. Oxygen, yeah. I, that could take, we could take a lot of time with this, we won't. Should Wellington add more safe pedestrian crossings on arterial, on arterial routes?
I suspect this question is really around Clyde Key, and again, I put this into the incompetence of options category, arterial routes, in my mind, should be left alone and not reduced in any way, certainly not for buses, cycle lanes, or zebra crossings, especially when routes like Clyde Key already have a perfectly functioning city-to-sea bridge. Arterial, arterial routes are usually part of a city's civil defense strategy as well, and they shouldn't be messed with. This tomfoolery of ideas will further slow commuting in and out of the city.
Thank you. All right. And next up is Teal. We have, you can have five, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Five, yeah.
Five, okay, cool, wow, you, very, very quick at answering questions, but that does not, that does not in any way, you know, detract from the quality of the answers, so.
We're all about efficiency.
Speed up the process.
Hopefully, it's the shape of things to come.
Or the yellow, or the green, whatever type that is, we'll cut it anyway.
Z for zebra or zulu. Is zoning enough to create affordable housing, or do developers need better incentives?
Well, the answer is both, really, zoning allowing it and incentivize the, the, to deliver it, you know, especially the developer, yeah. So, you know, you've got to make it possible for people to do business, and again, we talk about cutting red tapes and, you know, to speed up the process, and I think that's what we've tried to do right now. But our cities do need to evolve, still need to move, and I think we're all both agree with that, all of us, I'll kind of hear that, you know? We do need to move, but have to be in an organic way.
Tony?
Twenty-two.
You're good at this. Sorry, not to say that the others are not, but.
Unfortunately, you're talking about number picking, not necessarily the.
Yeah, yeah, I realize that, yeah. K for kilo. If elected, how will you ensure core infrastructure, infrastructure, sorry. If elected, how will you ensure core infrastructure spending comes first?
As I said before, there needs to be the ring fencing of maintenance, because that will affect how much we have for infrastructure in the future as well. There needs to be, I think at a council level, we need to get on board and have some good discussions about what, any new infrastructure we want, and the reason why I say we need to do this around the table, people will be going, woo, you're not consulting, not consulting. Once you go out to consult, once you start getting plans, once you start getting quotes, it costs a lot of money, and to do all that and then find out that half the council doesn't want to do it is a waste of time. So I think the council and using things like the district bank, we need to be quite clear what we want to do going forward, and then stick to it, but again, fund it when we have the money. But in the meantime, let's look after what we have.
Thank you. Dan?
Eleven-seven.
Eleven-seven it is. T for Tango. Do you commit to cycling, cycling's four pillars, promote, protect, maintain, complete?
Well, I don't really know what complete means in this context. Who? Never, never heard of him. I certainly don't want to spend more money on cycle lanes. I'd commit to reinstating car parking in Thordun to help the locals.
All right, and we have a, a couple of extra minutes for this first round, so the last question I will put to all three candidates, starting with Tony. A for Alpha. What political party are you linked to?
I am not linked to, linked to any political parties, there was a discussion the three of us had earlier, and we all believe, sorry, I'm just gonna answer the question for you, that political parties, they have enough clout nationally, and they dictate a lot of what councils can do. This is a chance for Wellington to do what's best for Wellington. I was associated with a group in Lower Hut called the Meeting of Great Minds, who wanted to form the benevolent dictator party. Caught up with them for a couple of drinks, that was fun, they nominated me for Minister of Opposition, which would be, you would just disagree with your own party, therefore negating the need for an opposition and saving fifty, sixty seats in the House, so, yeah, so that's the only party that I've had any affiliation with.
Yep. Thank you very much. Teal, would you like to add on to that?
No, I'm independent.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you very much, and Dan?
The Dan Party.
The Dan Party.
Of which I am the only member.
Oh, I was gonna say.
That is to say, I am an independent.
We might have a spot for you in there.
Well, my best-laid plans. So it looks like we're going to end this first round a little bit early, and we're going to take a ten-minute break and be back with hard-hitting questions. Thank you. Hard-hitting. Hard hitting. All right. All right, we're back with hard-hitting questions. All right, welcome back. We're going to start off with hard-hitting question number one. What, what about your policies will connect with young people and help stop the youth exodus from Wellington? And let's start with Teal.
Make Wellington affordable, fun and full of opportunity.
Does not waste words. All right, Tony?
Again, safety is a big concern at the moment, so we need to make the streets a bit safer. One way we can do that is by getting more people on the streets, particularly in the evenings and during the days. And again, that comes down to supporting the businesses, making sure that there's a bit of life that they can afford to be there, which comes back down to yet again, rates and affordability. So affordability helps a lot of these things. We are a very creative capital as well. We have lots of opportunity. There are amazing things coming out of, just out of the general public in the form of arts and technology. We need to get behind that and promote that so that there are jobs and opportunities so that the younger people, the people graduating have a connection with the city, so they stay here. Because our best and brightest are currently leaving in droves and that's. and that's a real tragedy for Wellington.
Thank you, Tony. Dan?
Cool. Yeah, so central government have caused its fair share of issues, but we had to talk about local issues. And Wellington City Council are amplifying certain negative things central government has done for us in Wellington. Firstly, the residential rates are forcing Wellington, Wellingtonians to sell up and leave. And then the commercial rates are 3.7 times what residents are paying, and that's killing our businesses. I met a panel beater the other day who was paying $1,000 a month in rates, and now they're paying $6,000 a month in rates. So fewer jobs, fewer people, fewer prospects. We've gotta stop the spending and make Wellington fun again.
There used to be a wonderful slogan, absolutely, positively Wellington. All right, hard-hitting question number two. Should the Golden Mile project proceed as approved or be redesigned with businesses? And let's start with Dan.
Redesigned. For a city known for having horizontal rain, I was horrified to see the shelters missing sides to keep people sheltered from the wind and the rain. It's almost as though the designs were made by people who are anti-Wellington. And in a way, they were. So we live in a city with some of the best creative minds in the world, thanks to Peter Jackson, James Cameron, and Richard Taylor. Those people should very much be included in any designs for the Golden Mile, along with the businesses, the people in the city, the pedestrians and cyclists, and the rest of the creative community. And again, at the very, 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 very bottom of that list would be the council officers, who are there to say, yes, how can we help? Thank you.
Tony?
Yes, definitely pause and consult with businesses. And I totally agree, amazing, creative city. We can come up with some innovative ideas and some brilliant, world-leading solutions, if we're allowed to. And as I said before, there are a lot of businesses who are prepared to put money towards it. Obviously, to help their own business, they need a return on that. But working with them, you can leverage off their support, plus put council support in. A big thing council can do is, it's a bit of a dirty name, private-public partnerships, but the council cutting through the red tape, handling the red tape, stopping bizarre costs, which just drive the price of things up. You know, a business will happily put some money into developing outside their shop and their store and work towards the Golden Mile, as long as they know they don't have to employ 25,000 consultants to help them through the process. And then that just frees up a bit more money. We get a better city, and everyone is happy.
Teal?
Redesign. I'll put it like this. I think we need to peel the Band-Aids off, because the current plan at the moment, we have ignored all the businesses around our city. And you wonder why you walk around the city and shops are closing. You know, people are out of business, family loss of income. And I often say, the first step in solving any problem is to recognize there is one. And I don't think we're doing that at the moment. Can we do more? Yes. Is it too late? No.
Thank you, candidates. Hard-hitting question number three. What is your position on retaining Wellington City Council's Te Fanganui, Atara Maori Ward and Greater Wellington Regional Council's Te Ukuku Oteka Maori constituency? Why do you hold that view? Teal?
I support it, because I think that at the moment, we want to make sure that the Maori have a voice and heard in our council table. Let's not forget, the Maori ward has been around since 2019, and it's been working well. So for that, you know, don't fix something that's not broken.
Dan?
Wellington City Council and its offices already consult with Eiwi, and I trust in that process. I think elected councillors should be there to represent all constituents of Wellington. So if there was a Maori councillor around the table, and they were there to represent every Wellingtonian but through a Maori world lens view, bring it on. Thanks.
Tony?
I'm for the wards. When in some of my dealings in previous businesses, we've had really, really good relationships with local Eiwi, and that's led to some very innovative and brilliant solutions. And, you know, as Dan says, the consultation is really, really good. But unfortunately, as we've seen with various councils, there's consultation, and then there's actually actioning. So I think having a Maori vote at council is good, because that will just lead to better engagement, because they feel they do have a voice, and they're part of the decision-making process and the voting, as opposed to just a tick-box consulting exercise. So it will lead to better engagement and better outcomes for the city.
All right, that's it for our hard-hitting questions. We'll now go to closing statements. Yes? Yeah, that we're gonna do? Excellent, good, good. All right, all right. No, I just got a funny look. That usually tells me I've forgotten something. Actually, yes, I'm happy to ask that. Do the candidates support amalgamation with the other four councils? And we'll start... Yep. Kapiti, Porirua, Upper Hut, Lower Hut. All right, and we'll start with Dan.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure. There's seven votes around that table, and Wellington would only have one. So that means, that's my understanding. So if, at the moment, in the current sort of system, so if amalgamation were to improve that situation and be better for Wellingtonians, I'd support it. But yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have a better answer.
Teal?
I agree with Dan. You know, it's complicated. And especially for us three here, we haven't been on their council table. So a little bit unfair in that sense, and we can only voice how we think it should be. But my view, the pendulum needs to swing both ways. Gotta have to go left and right. At the moment, it seems to be Wellingtoner, be at the brunt of it, relating to the costing, and the rate payer suffering from it. And that's not gonna work for me. So maybe we can ask this question in the end of the year, next year. I'll come back here and chat to you. All right?
I would like that. And Tony?
I'm probably a little bit more positive towards an amalgamation, which is, you know, is a terrifying concept for a lot of Wellingtonians. But I do know a couple of mayors who were elected three and six years ago. And they said, particularly around water, it was incredibly hard to get anything done. And a unified council would actually be a lot better on some of the bigger projects, such as water, reservoirs, public transport as well, because that cuts across so many different areas. We've got Wellington Harbour, which is a massive asset. It's fantastic. But you've got water coming into it from Upper Hut, Lower Hut, and Wellington. So who's in charge of the pollution and looking after it? Well, then that suddenly falls on the regional council. But then they now have to negotiate with all the other councils. So there was a lot of, there are a lot of sort of area-wide issues that are better handled. And at the moment, it's been picked up by the Greater Wellington City Council. But from what I've spoken to from quite a few councillors and other wards, is that they are, the more they're in their position, they're moving towards this will be a better solution. So I don't know, I haven't looked at all the details. But I do know when the referendum happened last time, there was a lot of misinformation. And eventually, it was voted down by the people. So whatever happens, it will come down to the public. But just be aware that there are some issues now that we're tackling, which cross all the boundaries. And there are some of the things that have been addressed pretty badly. We're having to set up a new water entity now, which the councils won't actually have a say in, because it is separate. There are some issues around it. I think it's gonna go well. I think they'll have the guts to make some big decisions. But yeah, I think in the future, it's going to happen. But we need to look at it, and we need to have a very grown-up discussion about this.
Thank you, Tony. We have an add-on from Lee. Teal, sorry.
Very quickly, I wanna share this something with you. Is the Wellington Water councillor skeleton? Walk into the bar, order a beer and a mop.
Well, thank you very much, candidates. We had, I think we had a bit of fun tonight, and I've learned a lot. I'm getting there, I have a process. See, as I said, fun. So, all right. So we will rush to the closing statements. I don't need to hear the sound of my own voice any more than I have. All right, we will start with Tony.
Again, my name, Tony Di Lorenzo. It's all about name recognition. Di Lorenzo, say it in your head. I love the city, I think we can do better. I think when, you know, the good news is every candidate is looking to keep the rates down now. So have a think about who you're gonna vote for. Think about the single transferable vote. They said the other day, you should pick at least five people on there, because your vote... Yeah. You need to think of the team that's gonna work there as well. So pick a group you think will do what's best for you. I'd be very proud to represent the city. As I say, I love the city, it's my home, and I will fight like hell for the city.
Thank you, Tony. Teal?
Well, my name is Teal Mau. I don't need to tell you any more than that, but if you want to know more about me, just grab your phone and search for the name, and everything you need to know is all there. The only thing that I want to add to this is that come October 11, I'm encouraging everyone to come out and vote. We all got part in this in this city, and we all need to play part of it. So just come out and vote. All right?
Dan?
Cool, thank you. So yeah, Dan Millward, number one in the Lempden Ward. Safer cities, better access for everyone, no matter their mode of transport. A more affordable city. That is some of the key things that I stand for. Vote Dan Millward, number one. Teal, number two. Tony, number three. All done in order of seating. So I can get away with it. Thank you very much.
Well, I can tell you that you have at least three great candidates to choose from. I can't speak on the others. Now, time afterwards. Afterwards, yep. So I would like to thank our candidates, our audience, Sam, Laura, and do we have anyone else hiding in the ether? And Stacy. Thank you very much, guys.